Board of Education meeting for May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P. M. If everyone could all please rise for our pledge of allegiance. You can sing it too if you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone and a special welcome to our guests tonight. We're going to get started with our student showcase. Julian, would you like to introduce our guests?
Uh, well, we have the Celine High School Choir taught by Sarah Price. And I, I, I think we're looking forward to hearing you. I think we're looking forward to hearing you.
Very, very nice. Um, so I don't know how this is going to translate at home. Um, usually we have that mic on. Susan, would you mind putting your mic on and kind of putting it over there? Maybe we'll pick up a little extra. You do, okay, perfect. Ben knows, all right, perfect.
This is, uh, Shaboom, uh, and it's going to feature Ben Isaacson and Isaiah Gifford. One, two, one, two, and.
Life could be a dream, life could be a dream. Do, 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 Shaboom.
Life could be a dream. If I could take you to a paradise up above. If you would tell me I'm the only one that you love. Life could be a dream, sweetheart.
Hello, hello, Shaboom, I'm hoping we meet again.
Life could be a dream. If only all my precious plans were come true. If you would let me spend my whole life loving you. Life could be a dream, sweetheart.
Ba do, ba do, ba, ba do, ba do, do.
Every time I look at you, something is on my mind. If you do what I want you to.
Baby, we'd be so fine. Life could be a dream. Shaboom, if I could take you to a paradise up above. Shaboom, if you would tell me I'm the only one that you love. Life could be a dream, sweetheart. With you, darling, life could be a dream, sweetheart. With you, darling, life could be a dream, sweetheart. With you, darling, life could be a dream.
And I just found another one. She usually gets it in the office, she didn't get one this year. For Nat King Cole fans.
Love, love, love. Yes, it's love. Love, 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 that's right. Da, 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 da. L is for the way you look at me. O is for the only one I see. V is very, very. Extraordinary. P is even more than anyone that you adore. And love is all that I can give to you. Love is more than just a game for two. Two in love can make it take my heart, but please don't break it. Love was made for me and you.
Made for me and.
L O V E, love is all that I can give to you. Love is more than just a game for two. Two in love can make it take my heart, but please don't break it. Love was made for me and. Love, love, love. Yes, it's love. Love, 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 that's right.
Thanks so much. Let us know if you want to come to a Tigers game with us. You're all invited.
Thank you so much. Just absolutely wonderful and the only appropriate time when you can say sweetheart to a principal. Very, very nicely done. Um, and, and just, uh, just to reiterate the date, June fifteenth at Tiger Stadium. They will, um, be doing the anthem. So wonderful, wonderful. Um, moving on to our next portion of the agenda is public comment. Betty, do we have any public comment forms? Okay, we have none, so I'm going to forward through. Response to previous public comment. I wanted to tell all of you that we appreciate receiving persuasive letters from elementary school students. We received one regarding, um, uh, hoping that the Board of Education would consider a no homework policy for our school district. That is an operational decision, so I will defer that to Dr. Latch. But, um, appreciate hearing from students always. Otherwise, SASboard at celine schools dot org or the Let's Talk feature on our website. Moving to revisions or approval of agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. So moved, Miller. Okay, Jenny, thank you.
Second, Esteban.
Susan, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Our scheduled reports, I'd like to introduce Cara Davis to introduce her team and begin our teaching and learning presentation.
Fantastic, good evening, everybody. I hope you all have enjoyed this wonderful sunny day. We are excited to have two additional teaching and learning presentations today. Because one part of our mission as a teaching and learning team is to have a continuum of programming and services for students and for staff. And tonight, we're highlighting the amazing program for our specialist populations. We're going to start off with Katie O'Keefe, Director of the English Learning Program here. And then Molly Garcia, Director of Student Services, and Monica Ellis, Assistant Director of Student Services. Will be sharing highlights from the special education programming that we have. So if we could hold questions until the end, we'll go back to back. Katie and then Monica and Molly. And then we'll, um, have some space for questioning after that. Thanks.
Thank you, Cara, and thank you to the Board of Education for inviting the English Learner Department to present tonight. Um, the English language, the English language department consists of eight people altogether. We have first, I just want to present our entire team real quick. Um, it's extremely important that the board knows that there are eight departments staff members. So the department has doubled in size over the past three years. Tanya Haik is at the high school and Annette Blank is at our middle school. We have three tutors at Harvest Elementary. That's Floriana Salanta, Kat, excuse me, Kathy Kadrovich, and we have Catherine Bartholomay. At Heritage, we have one tutor, that's Teddy Sotropoulos, and then at, excuse me, we actually have two. We have Teddy Sotropoulos at Heritage and then Angie Zabekowski. Angie splits her time too with Woodland Meadows. And then I'm at Pleasant Ridge overseeing the department and also working with students directly at Pleasant Ridge. So what is our English Learner Department? What does it consist of? What is it all about? Our main goal is to support English learners and their families by teaching the English language and to support all cultures. Over the past three years, as you can see on the student caseload information, it has increased incrementally by about ten percent. In the last year, it's gone up by almost fifteen percent, which is why we've doubled our case, uh, excuse me, doubled the staff from four tutors to now eight tutors across the board. In the past three years, we've given a couple of presentations, those are pre-COVID. And what do our students bring to Celine Schools? One of the great things that the students bring to school, to Celine Schools is the ability to approach and solve a problem with a very different perspective. I call it a global perspective. For example, today, I was working with a couple of students. Um, one was Chinese, one was Japanese. And when I asked the student a question, he looked at me and he tried to answer it, and then he asked me a question and I did not understand what he was asking. He looked at me and patiently thought of a different approach to asking that question. And that's what the Celine, that's what our EL students, English Learner students are able to do. Because they have the ability to think in maybe one or two other languages, their brain is already wired to be able to think and analyze a solution to a problem that maybe a monolingual student is not able to come up with. They just have that ability like wired in their brains. And I think it's really important that Celine Area Schools understands that and continues to embrace our EL students and just sees them as an excellent opportunity to teach others in the classroom, to teach other students like, we have this multilingual or bilingual student in the classroom, let's ask them, how would they solve the problem? And if there's an issue with a language, if the student is limited in English, then use our apps. We have, um, in our school district, we use the app called Say Hi, and we give the student the iPad and they talk in their language. If it's Spanish or Portuguese or Japanese, they speak in it, and then it translates to the English language and the teacher is able to read it in the, in the language to the students. So our students do bring a lot, but the one really important thing that I want you, everybody to understand is that they have this ability already wired in their brain to solve problems at a different level or just have a different perspective. Our trends with EL students. So we are seeing a greater number of Eastern European and Central American students. And actually, I should put Central American before Eastern European because we are definitely seeing an influx of Central American students coming from Mexico, Honduras. And in, as far as Eastern European, we're seeing some students come, we had students coming in from Romania. We had some students coming in from Russia too, and it's starting to kind of increase again. Another community or cultural group that's increasing is Portugal, uh, the Portuguese population, and that's, those students are coming from Brazil. There's a growing community of Chinese students as well as the Arabic students. And the growing EL population in our school district is at Harvest Elementary. They are at approximately forty students right now. Diversity has not changed over time. Spanish is still top, followed by Chinese, Japanese, we have Arabic and Romanian kind of tied for the next tier. And there's a strong emphasis, of course, on changing administration leadership. Our high school students were surveyed, our high school English Learner students were asked the question about diversity and they said at the, the staff level, they would just love to see more diversity in their teachers, within the teachers and so forth. How do we support our students as the English Learner Department? There are several ways that we support them, and one way, um, we easily support them is through texting our students. We email, we have tutors post on Instagram if necessary. This last year, we started doing YouTube videos where we sent out the video clip and then it automatically translated to the family's language. So that's worked out really well. So the communication has definitely improved over time and the doors have been opened over the past few years. Academic trends, as I've noted before, so we have, um, this increase in population over at Harvest Elementary. And with that, our WEDA scores are showing a greater range. With our WEDA scores, the lowest, lowest score that a student can obtain is a one point zero, and that's for a non-English speaker. And we're seeing this increase of one point zeros to two point zeros. And then there's the three and the four tier. But because, again, because we're seeing the increase in ones to twos, that's another reason why the staff has doubled. And I do appreciate, and our entire staff appreciates Celine Schools providing that, um, giving us the opportunity to interview more EL tutors and increase the staff. So thank you. How do we support our families in continuation? Inclusiveness, empathy, a lot of our teachers are, are starting to show more and more empathy. And one of the, one of the great things that we're doing as a district is we're, we are purchasing curriculum that has to be, that's required now to be translated into another language. So if we're looking at a math curriculum for a high school or we're looking at science, we have to have the ability to be able, to provide that in, let's say, the Spanish language or the Portuguese language. So that's definitely, we're definitely going down the right path. And this last year too, um, Foundation for Celine Area Schools approved a, it's a multilingual grant. And that is a grant that provided, um, books, multilingual books, Spanish, Japanese, Chinese, and Arabic books to libraries across the district. So we, again, we greatly appreciate that and very thankful to, to the foundation for, um, being able to purchase these books for all six of our libraries. And what's neat is to not only see the EL students take an interest in them and start, you know, to motivate them and encourage them to read in their language, but it's for our monolingual speakers too. Like, for example, at the high school, there are fourteen students who want to work with these students. They want to support them and, and figure out a way to, to get, figure out a way for them to be able to support our EL students in culture or a language. And I think that's awesome that, um, monolingual students, everyone just wants to, to gather, wants to appreciate our EL students as well. So again, the multilingual grant, it's not just for EL students, it's for everybody. The teachers can tap into it, teachers can bring in Spanish books, or they can bring in the Chinese books, bring them into their classroom. And perhaps they might have a Chinese-speaking student in their classroom and they can have that student read to the classroom. Or just show the students, what, what does a book written in Chinese, Chinese or Japanese or Arabic look like? And more support, so what we've done over the past few years, um, last year, they held their first EL summer camp outside. So at Celine Community Medals, um, the tutors had approximately about fifteen to twenty students or so. Attend camp three days a week for three hours per day. You can see there's a student that has a magnifying glass right there. That's one of our students and just having a blast. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of the staff for being outside for three hours a day in all conditions, any type of weather, they were there. So thank you again, EL staff for doing that. The movie night in November, this past November, again, thank you for supporting that and approving that. The, um, EL movie night was held at Imagine Theater, it was a literacy and movie night. We had books donated from the libraries and Mrs. Ledford and different people throughout the district. Our TLT Teacher Learning Team Committee also provided books. So, um, the next thing is, we started doing a little bit more home, home visits, and I wrote on demand, but it's becoming more of a relationship building time. Visiting with families, either virtually or in person, has really proven to be successful. Dr. Latch had a listening session where we had a few families show up. That was just awesome. These families, when they showed up, that was part of the, part of the reason why they showed up was because of the relationship that we had built with those families. And they wanted to come and see and hear what it's about. So I think, yeah, again, home visits are really important, relationship building is key. Um, we try to kick off the school year every year with a breakfast, welcome back to school breakfast. Again, summer camp, summer EL, this year, I'm sorry, some, there will be, of course, summer camp, but we are also providing summer EL tutoring. It comes directly after camp. So the students are staying after to work on all, all domains, on reading and writing and speaking and listening in the language and to work on building their math skills that they've learned over this past school year. And again, EL Department is the connection to the families. So here we have Celine Area Schools and we have our families, but we needed to keep building that, we needed that bridge to be built. And we're, we're really, really trying hard to like, to connect with the families. So that the teachers, when teachers reach out to us, we can, you know, we, we're the connection, we're the tool that says, okay, well, we can talk, contact that family, we'll talk to them, whatnot, and then we email the, the teacher. And by doing that, the teacher, the families feel more included and more supported. And the benefit, see how the student, so a benefit to going in and actually having home visits with the student is to, the key is to see how your student lives and to, to also experience the family interaction in the home. So we can, it says there, you know, we can visualize, literally see what the family already has and what they might need. And then we also see in return how the families are helping us. They're opening up our eyes to a different way of culture, a different way of learning. We go into a home, it's not, okay, what does the family need? But we're also there to see and to hear, what can we do as Celine Schools? What can we learn from this family and bring it back to the classroom and share? So again, home visits are key to building that bridge and helping the family feel more comfortable and helping us as the EL Department to better understand that family. Again, I wrote down, it makes the teacher more approachable, it makes us more approachable because we've met them on their level. Okay, and I'm almost finished here. How do our EL families access the content? We have several different apps that we use. In Celine Area Schools, they use Say Hi to automatically translate. One of the big tools right now, it's kind of starting to become popular, is the Talking Points. And it's a great way to communicate to your families via text. So the teacher can get, go out right on their computer, they type in a message and then it instantly goes to the, the parent's text. And it goes into the language, and there's about thirty different languages or so to choose from. Our language trends in Celine Schools, so of course it's Spanish and then Chinese, Romanian, Arabic, Portuguese are all tied. And, and past, oh, present and past, we've had all several different languages. This next year, we have a family from Uzbekistan, which is really awesome. They're coming at the high school and then middle school and I believe elementary. So we have a few kids coming from there. They're coming from Ann Arbor, but originally from Uzbekistan. And we have just a whole variety, it's very fascinating. And now I want to say thank you. So thank you so much, seriously, for letting us, um, letting us present and to share what is it like to be in the English Learner Department and, um, and I, hopefully I shared a little bit of insight on what is it like to be an English Learner student in our district. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, how are you? So as Cara said, uh, we are part of the teaching and learning team that Steve and Cara have developed this year. And we have been super excited to be able to work with not all of the teaching and learning team, but specifically, more intentionally with the EL Department. In Celine, there's a very large intersectionality of students that have disabilities as well as students that speak a second language. So it has been, um, really useful to have a lot of Katie's information. We have advocated to have our IEP system translate into our top languages. We have been able to have Katie share her updates in our special ed newsletters for our service providers. So again, the development of the TLT has been very beneficial. So we're going to get into here our Student Services Board update. Monica, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, thanks for having us tonight. So currently, we serve approximately seven hundred and seventy-nine students in the Celine Area Schools District with, um, individualized education plans, also known as IEPs. And that represents about fourteen point six percent of our total student enrollment. A majority of these students are serviced within our district in their homeschool buildings. And really, only less than two percent of our students are currently going to countywide programs. And we find that to be, um, really a point of pride. We really try to educate our students in their home district and we really try to exhaust all options before looking at countywide programming. The following services are available for all of our students ages three to twenty-six in all of our buildings. We have school social work, we have speech therapy, occupational therapy and physical therapy. We also have resource room teachers, teacher consultants and school psychologists to make sure that we are identifying and reevaluating students on a consistent basis. Uh, this year, we were very excited to be able to hire a district employee for our Board Certified Behavior Analyst, also known as the BCBA. She has been extremely beneficial to providing supports to our staff and our building teams to support students with behavior challenges, and it's made a big difference in how we are delivering services and problem solving. The other thing that we have is a WISD Teacher Consultant, Liz Westfall. She is available to us for also behavior supports, but, um, we also have academic supports. She's kind of a go-between before we start looking at outside county, she comes in and helps our building teams. For those specialized services like vision and hearing and, um, mobility services, we look to, um, have supports be provided by the WISD Teacher Consultants.
Okay, here we go. All right, we're not going to go backwards, we'll go forward. All right, so here is a snapshot of our current eligibility categories here in Celine. We are on trend with the state and county trends, uh, specific learning disability, um, the autism spectrum disorder, and then the severe cognitive impairment are our largest categories, along with otherwise health impaired. We have less than ten students under each category of vision and hearing, physical impairment, severe multiple impairment or traumatic brain injury. We have seen an increase in students being identified with a disability since two thousand and twenty-one, and that is on trend with what Wasna County is seeing as well. And we're, next slide will be some trend data that Monica will speak to.
So you can see, um, on the left-hand side there, there are the different disability categories that student could, students can be identified for special education supports. This is about over the last ten years. At the bottom, we have, um, the early childhood development delay and, and the emotional impairment staying pretty consistent over the last few years. We do expect that early childhood probably to go up a little bit with the pandemic because of the social, the lack of socialization that a lot of kids have had, so that is a category that we're kind of keeping an eye on. And, um, the. And the navy line there is, that's the autism spectrum disorder. So we have seen a large growth in that, and we are identifying students and intervening early, which is a key component. The otherwise health impaired category in that light pink, that's kind of a catch-all. And we've seen a lot of students with anxiety, ADHD, so that's why that one is somewhat variable. And other health conditions, that's where those students would be serviced under that category. And then we have the speech and language in the purple. There was a pretty large decline because we looked at how we're delivering those services in terms of articulation. So that's where you can see that, that pretty sharp decline. Specific learning disability, that top line there, we have seen some decline in that. And about, let's see, sixteen, seventeen, that's where we went to a different model of identifying students with learning disabilities. We went to patterns of strengths and weaknesses. So that's where we see that having a little difference there in the trend data.
All right, so in this slide, we talk about departments' points of pride. We have, thanks to the Technology Department, and Jay, and all of the wonderful IT staff, we've been able to increase the implementation of technology into all spaces. One of the ones that's very exciting to see used is the Promethian Board. It's like a giant iPad where teachers can hook their devices directly up to, and it's interactive with students. Chromebooks, student iPads. We have seen an alignment of our communication systems across all buildings through the core boards. Those are installed on almost every playground. We just had a big installation at the high school. You will see these on teacher lanyards, we have them on visuals in the hallways. So this has been very exciting, that we have been able to get consistent communication in all the buildings, so that students don't have to relearn how adults are communicating with them. We are consistent at every building they visit. We have also seen a very large engagement and participation in social thinking at all levels. We have had two of our elementary buildings take it on as a building-wide goal. We've been able to train general education staff, as well as special education staff. And Seline was actually just invited to be part of a keynote presentation at an international conference on social thinking. So myself, Kenyatta Hughes, and Amber Satori are going to be interviewed for that later this week. So we're very excited about that. The other really exciting piece about the social thinking is watching students connect with it and use it. It is a intervention tool that, and system that the students really pick up fast, and are able to apply across a variety of contexts. So it's been very exciting. We have also been able to see a lot of service provider collaboration to help students generalize their skills. One of the very interesting events that took place this year came out of the Augmented Communication Conference. It was called Story Walks. There's a picture of it with the hopscotch, where our OTs, our speech and language therapists, sorry, occupational therapists, our speech and language therapists, and our resource room teachers collaborated around a story. And so they had language activities, fine motor, gross motor activities, and literacy activities, all embedded into these Story Walks, and those were very exciting to see. We've also been able to align a lot of our behavior support. As Monica said, hiring Katie McGee as our full-time BCBA has been very helpful. We have also brought in the ISD team to help align some of our processes for developing the behavior plans. So we've been very excited to see how that has worked to support not only our students, but our staff and our families.
And this is the most exciting slide. This is the peer-to-peer slide. So we are very proud of this. We are the only district in Washtenaw County to have two START peer-to-peer sites. START is the statewide autism resources and training organization. So the picture on the far left, that is our PALS program from the Seline Middle School. So they are eating lunch there, and they have both gen ed peers and special ed peers come together on a weekly basis to talk and socialize and have a great time. That middle picture is from our connecting program at the high school. And they do activities throughout the school year. They have lunch every week on Thursdays. They have peers, they have connecting club in the morning. So we are very, very proud of that initiative. And then we also have this new, this year is an EMU partnership. So our connecting three students now are able to earn college credit in those that are preparing to be educators, hopefully special educators, since there is, there is a shortage, and we need them. So we were very proud to be able to put that together this year. And then lastly, the picture on the far right is, we were a cool school this year for the polar plunge, and we raised, I don't know the exact dollar amount, but it was very exciting to have that at Hornet Stadium. So, very exciting stuff.
And before we move on, the other peer-to-peer site that is a new one this year was at Heritage, and it was called the STAR Program. So that is also very exciting. So the Seline Community Supports, we have really been able to, even despite the pandemic, really grow our community partnerships this year. We were, thanks to Rex, being very open to this idea. We were able to support the Operations Department at the middle school with two of our young adult students and a job coach. So they have been cleaning twice a week over at the middle school, earning their first paychecks, and filling a need we had at the district level. The True Community Credit Union came in and did lessons with our young adult program regarding fiscal responsibility. I believe they also do the credit union at Heritage, but this was specifically for our students and young adult. Open Spot Theater, this resource came along through one of our parents of a student that has a disability, but they have been an amazing partner for the past several years. And they were actually able to come in twice this year to the Seline Middle School and put on two different student-written and performed theater productions, which were adorable and very well-done. And then, again, flexibility on behalf of Seline Area School staff, Brian Puffer and his community education team were able to help us identify instructors that would be open to coming and delivering their content in our young adult program. So we had pottery, we had meditation, and I believe we had a martial arts class. So we weren't able to get out and do as many community events, but they came to us. So that was very exciting for our young adult program. And then, of course, the Seline Area Schools Foundation. They just continue to do amazing things to support our department. The grants continue to be gifted to our teachers and our students, and we just have been incredibly fortunate. They did support some of our necessary objects for the Story Walks, the technology pieces, some of our playground stuff. So as always, we appreciate them. And we just thank you for letting us present on the Student Services Department.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Kara, Katie, Molly, and Monica. So now we'll take questions or comments from any of our trustees on either presentation. Correct? That's okay. You're a good volunteer.
Okay, I'll go first. I took some notes. Just wanting to dig in just a little bit, but, you know, in my, in my everyday job, I do a lot of the same work that, like, Jen Nelson does, so like, coaching teachers. And so one of the things that I know is that it takes, it takes a number of hours for teachers to shift practice, but it takes even more hours in professional development for that to impact students. So I'm curious about the professional development. I know you mentioned START, which I know is a great place for professional development. I wondered, like, is there PSYOP, or what kinds of professional development is being afforded to either department to kind of help support teacher, to help support students in their ever-changing needs? We have to hear you in the mic. Sorry. Yes.
Sure. Actually, with the PSYOP training, one of my other tutors, so Tanya Hike and I just went through the training of trainers for PSYOP for the, during the month of April. So that was, that was great, an awesome professional development opportunity. And our entire team just got back from the MABE Michigan Association for Bilingual Education Conference. We both attend, we all extended, excuse me, on Thursday and Friday. So, and then at the beginning of the year, we had Pooja Mullins coming from Lincoln Town, Lincoln. She is a PSYOP consultant, and she trained the entire staff back in September, thanks to Kara.
So I think one of the things that Seline Area Schools does really well is cross-train staff. So not only special ed providers or EL providers, but general education teachers as well. So again, we have done some social thinking training this year. We've done the START training. We've done the Augmented Communication Device Professional Development. One of the things that the Teaching and Learning Team has really focused on this year is what can the professional development look like for everybody next year, under the lens of good instruction is for all students, and how do the pieces for student services and EL all benefit general education teachers as well? So that's part of our PD development for next year, is how do we roll this out so that everybody is getting what they need? So we are collaborating to make that even more inclusive for next year.
So, so just for me to understand, like a, like a universal design piece?
Correct.
Nice. Okay. I have some other questions I'll let other people ask, but I was really impressed with just hearing about the identity-affirming work that's happening in both departments, and how important that is for families and for students. It is a point of pride that we have programs that support so many of our students locally and their families, connecting them with community and resources, and also just inviting them to be a part of who we are. So, so I heard something this week about when we listen to others and we listen with a lens, that our ideas will change because we hear something from them, instead of, like, sticking to our own plan. When we listen with that lens, it really is better for all of our students. And what I am hearing in your presentation is that, that you're going in and you're really listening with the idea that your programs are going to change to provide the best opportunities for our students. So thank you for that work and dedication.
So my curiosity then is just, you made me think about it. So just now, you're talking about tying together services and interventions. We have an MTSS Coordinator position that we're currently posted for. Is that part of, like, the big plan, big picture? Like, is that too big to ask?
Yes. So our MTSS part-time slash really full-time person, Caroline Stout, has predominantly supported the work K-six-ish. And what we are seeing is that there continues to be a need for tiered systems of support at the secondary level, even more so due to the pandemic, correct? So, again, part of the brainchild of Kara and Steve, the Teaching and Learning Team, we've all been sitting at the table, having conversations about what, what could we do better? Using some of the grant money we've been able to get through ESRS and 11T, that is where we have been able to look at, for a few years at least, having that secondary MTSS Coordinator. Correct?
So I have two questions. So the Board Certified Behavior Analysis, wait, Analyst, sorry. Are these for students who are already under the services? Or it, could that, could they work with students who aren't currently in the program?
So a Board Certified Behaviorist could work with any student that has identified need. It is a very intensive approach to instruction, though. So they are really currently used at Tier Three, or students that are identified with a disability, just because of how intensive it is. However, she has been able to go in and do observations of classrooms, along with our ISDTC, and offer some suggestions around educational strategies, which is a pillar out of START. They've been able to go in and offer some instructional tweaks, some environmental changes for students that have popped up and have been identified by the buildings. So that is how they've been able to work with other students. Yep.
Awesome. Thanks. And then I have a question, and for you, but then also you all can answer as well. So I really liked hearing about all of the stuff that you're doing as far as diversity, and equity, and inclusion. And so, you know, the, hearing from the students who say that they want to see more people, right, that look like them, I think that's great, to get that feedback. And also, I like that you're meeting with the families and meeting them where they're at. So we have a DEI Advisory Committee, and so, and Kara's on it as well. So my question is for you, how can we support the EL Department in regards to the students and families?
So the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee has already started reaching out to our multilingual families, English learner families. And, for example, this past week, when I sat in on Pleasant Ridge's DEI committee meeting, we discussed the idea of having multicultural games, like, the idea was like toys, then we thought of games and activities, like, what could our PE department, for example, do, and things like that, you know? So they've already started kind of tapping into that, and even across the district, too. There's been more inclusion, more efforts made to directly work with our families, pull them in and ask them, what is it that our district needs, you know? And I know Dr. Lott has had his listening sessions, too, which have been extremely beneficial to all of the populations that we've been working with. So, yeah, they're already starting. Thanks.
Awesome. Yeah, I forgot to mention that piece, too. And, yeah, I think that's great. Each building has an equity team, yeah. And so I guess that shows with the DEI Advisory Committee and taking that work and getting it to the buildings. I think that's amazing. So question for Molly and Monica as well. Is there any support, anything that you all would like to see happening as far as DEI?
So I think the Special, Student Services Department, Special Education Department, has some representation on the DEIC. I think the continued initiatives of recognizing the intersectionality that occurs in a lot of students' lives is really, really important. So I think, right now, it is, you know, a lot of the tools we have, again, thanks to technology, we're not only able to put them into visuals versus words, but we are able to get very diverse pictures in our visuals. We're able to get things translated, we're able to enlarge print, laminate differently. So I think, you know, just continuing to listen to the voices that are on the committee that are representing students with disabilities is going to be key.
Thank you.
Great. I had a, I just had a couple of comments and one question. So I love the collaboration I'm seeing here. I think throughout these presentations, Steve, that we, we highlight the different areas within the school district, it's wonderful to see everyone collaborating and working together so well. So thank you. Also want to recognize what you said about the Foundation for Seline Area Schools. They gave you a big shout-out this morning. They're huge advocates of your department. So thank you for that. Was just curious if you could talk kind of about the state, I guess I'm looking at Molly because you talked about the slide, the state of the, the social work and the school psychologist. I know we were talking about that quite a bit with regards to ESR funds and hiring. Can you kind of give us a little state of the state on social work, maybe specifically, and how we're doing with that? And if we can continue to support those students in any ways in our buildings?
So we were able to pick up three additional staff members with the first round of ESR funds. We were able to place them at Harvest and Pleasant Ridge, where we saw the largest need for social-emotional support. So that has been amazing. We were able to pick up another, we call them social-emotional coaches, that is split between Heritage and the middle school to work with identified students that come out of the building teams. So that has been pretty successful. And then we were able to find a counselor mid-year that has started at Heritage. And again, all of them hit the ground running and been very receptive to the needs in the buildings. We have seen a lot more students be able to get some of that social-emotional support. So that's been very exciting. And then, looking forward with the 11T funds, I've already had three interviews for staff for next year to be either elementary counselors or social workers at other buildings. So we're trying to be very strategic with where we're putting the support, given the fact that they may not be able to be operationalized positions. But where do we see the need, and can we intervene early enough that as the students continue to grow, that they will have skills and coping skills that they may not need the drug support after that?
Excellent. Thank you so much. Jenny?
I just had one quick question I forgot to ask, and I want to make sure that I understand. So someone mentioned something about our speech and articulation, and the decline in students who have IEPs for speech and language. And there was something about articulation. Is that because we're able to meet the needs of students with articulation outside of an IEP? Or how, how is that decline happening?
So if we go back and look, it was a state mandate. What they were finding back in about 2012 was that there was a very large number of students being served well beyond the range of when the articulation skill should be mastered. And so that was not least restrictive.
Got it.
So the state asked all of us to start looking at those students and dismissing them if they, so usually you should develop an R by eight. If you haven't mastered it a few years after that, you're probably never going to master it. So to be pulled out of classrooms to work on a skill is not least restrictive environment. So they suggested we start dismissing them, and then the real big steep, and again, I told Monica, I might be making this up because I don't quite remember that, but there was some disproportionality. So districts are auditing. but there was some disproportionality, so districts are audited all the time on who's identified in your percentages.
Yes.
And so, when those audits started to happen, then districts really had to hot step it to move them off of IEPs. Celine was ingenious and they came up with some general education kind of MTSS interventions to continue to support students with articulation. But our speech department is very dedicated to helping students master it in context, giving home supports, because they understand that continuing to pull a child to work on sounds is not the best. So, they work really closely with families.
Great, thanks for explaining that, that makes so much sense.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Okay, all right, excellent. Thank you so much. Oh, David?
Yeah, sorry, no, I've just got one quick comment and a couple of questions. Um, first of all, uh with respect to the um English language um learning program, I just um wanted to make the comment that um I'm really impressed with um the work that you're doing with respect to um inclusivity and um with respect to um family outreach, especially because this is um a population that can really uh be difficult to, to include because of all the barriers, that's language barriers and cultural barriers that's um they face. And I especially appreciated hearing that your, your philosophy of embracing bilingualism and biculturalism as being a, a source of strength, because that's really something that's, that's supported by the psychological um research literature. So, that was, that was great to hear. Um, then moving over to a couple of questions on the uh special services side. Um, partly that was covered by what, by the question that Jenny asked. But I was also wondering, looking at the trends data, um also looking at the decline in um the dark pink services, the special, the specific learning disability services. Um, I was just wondering what's, what accounted for that? And, and, and talking about both of those declines in, in services, I was wondering, um, you know, to what extent, to what extent are those kids, because presumably those, those kids with those same issues are still in the district? Or, you know, kids similar to them. Uh, to what extent are they still receiving the, the care that they, they would need outside of, you know, being within the, uh, without having an IEP? Are they still receiving the kind of care that they need?
So, the decline in specific learning disability, if you look about 2016, 17, it crosses with otherwise health impaired, and then you see otherwise health impaired.
Is that just kind of a re, re categorization thing, is that just kind of?
Yes, yes, so quite a few counties in the state of Michigan moved to what's called a patterns of strength and weakness, which is you have to have two cognitive strengths and two cognitive weaknesses. What they were finding is that students were being over identified for specific learning disability when it was a discrepancy model. So, previously you had to have a 15-point spread from your IQ to your level of performance, but we were starting to realize there is biases in the standardized assessments. So, they moved to these cognitive strengths and weaknesses. So, students, it's not that they're not getting services, it's what you said, a re categorization.
They're just, they're just receiving services under a different category.
Correct, so a lot of students that maybe have dyslexia or ADHD that's impacting their ability to perform academically, we now can catch under otherwise health impairment.
Okay, and my other question was, um, you know, there's been obviously a lot of concern coming out of the, the pandemic about um, um, speech and language um issues, articulation issues, um potentially other types of, of um special needs that kids might have, especially in younger ages. Is that something that, that we are seeing, is that something that's too early to see? Or is that something that is um maybe an issue that's, that we just can't tell yet or that is, is overflowing?
So, the, this is, this, these trend data's come from my school data and they're a year behind.
Yeah.
Um, if you look here at our percentage increase though, so in the first five years I was here, uh Celine Area Schools hung out right about 13.4%, which is the state average. And so, in a year's time, we've gone up 1%.
So, I was just wondering specifically about those, those, you know, kindergartners, first graders.
Right, so I think that's that 1% we're starting to see is the criteria for getting an IEP has not changed. A lot of it still is, how do you perform compared to your peers? We have not been able to realign a lot of our tier one instruction. So, I think what all of us on the teaching and learning team are being very mindful of is we do not want to over identify students with disabilities if it's a pandemic effect. So, we're looking very closely at tier, tier one, tier two interventions and working really closely with those student study teams to be very cautious that is this a true disability? Or is this some instructional interventions we need? And I think that's where we're starting to look at how can we use some of those MTSS people in a better way to review data. So, again, I don't know that the state of Michigan is going to change our criteria. We want students to have the help, but we also don't want them to be over identified for a disability if they don't have it. So, that's a balancing act that to your point, I think in the next two to three years, a lot of districts are going to have to be very thoughtful about.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time and your, and your service to these students. Um, moving on to our next scheduled report, bond and millage renewal. Principal Raft, if you'd like to introduce your guest and presentation.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you again for having us. Uh, we do have a lot of players here tonight that was, uh, have been part of this and um introduce a few of them right now that are here. Rex Clary, our director of operations. Rachel, Jay Grossman, our director of uh technology. Anna Britnell, who's sitting behind the screen back there, who does a lot for us with this, been part of this project as well. Rob Atkins, who is our president of King Scott. Uh, Becky Timberlake, Clark Construction, and Paul Twig, Barton Marwell, back there. So, they'll all be chiming in if you have questions and things that we are getting at. So, um, again, thank you for having us uh tonight. Kind of maintaining the excellence in education and facilities for the future of our students. This is kind of a, a pitch we're going to start moving with. We are potentially looking to generate in excess of $180 million with well decreasing our millage by point five. Point five. We started with a seven in 2015 and went to an eight mil, um, when we had it past the bond of 2015. The election is coming up in November 8th. If you guys want to recap a little bit of the 2015 bond, when we passed this bond in 2015, it was safe, warm and dry, really brick and mortar, um, behind the scenes. And we started off by with our uh renovation of all of our vestibules, creating safe spaces and also moving Pleasant Ridge and renovating Pleasant Ridge at that time to move the office from the middle to the outside where we could be in more safe environment for students coming in. And Rex will kind of talk about some of the things that are continuing to happen.
Yeah, so as we wrap up stage three, um, after this summer's work, we will have installed roughly about 450,000 square foot, feet of new roofing. Um, with uh Pleasant Ridge, Woodland, Heritage and Liberty uh being pretty much covered overall. Uh, new energy efficient boilers were installed at middle school, high school and Liberty. Um, new HVAC controls, which were essential during COVID. Um, and we've had some issues this week, but we plan, this summer we will complete the high school um before we lose the Windows 7 network, which is no longer supported. Um, again, when that building opened, the HVAC contractor was out of business and the controls were no longer manufactured. We've been supporting it as we redid Harvest, we harvested those controls and we've band-aided the high school, but it's got to be done this summer. Um, we replaced fluorescent tubes and metal halides throughout the districts. Um, parking lots, classrooms, gymnasiums and hallways. Um, we're about 90% complete and we will wrap that up uh at 100% by the end of phase three spending in 2024. And then parking lots and drives, we've uh, we've resurfaced, uh, we, or rebuilt and redesigned for safety as needed um since we've passed that in 2015.
And as you'll be watching, our, the big uh middle school gymnasium project is already going on. Uh, they're working from three to 11 every day. And then so, it's open back up in the morning for the students. And if you had a chance to walk through there, it's, the progress is really amazing so far. Uh, and then we'll be working on a couple of things in the, in the next summer for Harvest parking lot area and then wrapping that up, um, for the 2015 piece. Again, thank you to the voters for that and our Board of Education behind that uh 2015 bond. So, what's been done so far, we talked about this. We have already partnered with the construction management group, Clark Construction, and our architect group, uh, King Scott. Uh, we performed a educational needs and facility assessment in all our buildings with administrators and staff and the Capital Projects team. The needs assessment came up with about $313 million worth of needs, and this is over a 10-year period. Obviously, that's not, um, not only needs, but there's some really wanted things as well in that. Um, we decided to look at scaling that way down and going with a point five deduction in our mill. Um, we've contracted with Epic MRA, it's a survey group. Rob will be talking a little bit about those results here shortly. And we had, we held a number of community focus groups, uh, really behind some, some of the, getting some feedback. A lot of people that are supportive, very supportive of our school groups, wanted to give us feedbacks of some of the ideas that came out of that needs assessment. So, I will turn it over to Rob, talk a little bit about the MRA.
Okay, so as we've been, um, you know, we identified over 300 million in improvements to the district facilities. So, through our work with the focus groups, we also did the Epic MRA survey, which reaches the broader Celine community. Because we really want to gauge the community and really come to you with a recommendation of a bond proposal that we're very confident the community will support. Epic MRA is a professional polling and survey group. I'm not sure if you've heard of them, but they do a lot of polls and surveys for communities, um, political candidates, uh, elections, and they also specialize in school bond proposals and working with districts. They've been around for 37 years. Um, we work a lot with them, uh, with all the districts that we work with on bond proposals. And just to give you an idea of how accurate their survey did is, it's very scientific in how they do it. Uh, we just had an election May 3rd. Overall statewide, we had about a 65% pass rate for all the bond proposals that went forth. Um, Epic MRA was involved with seven of those districts. So, for their, the seven that they worked with, um, three of the districts, their survey data of their community for that district showed that the bond proposal that the school was proceeding with uh would be supported and all three of those passed. They also had three other districts that um their data uh from the surveys showed that the broader community was not in support of it. And the district still went forth, uh, trying to put together very robust campaigns to try to generate that support. And all three of those uh did go down in defeat. The seventh one, um, they're, they also tested with this district how much of a um milli, or how much of a bond proposal would the community support? Their data showed that the community would support a $30 million bond initiative. So, um, and they got, from what I understand in talking with Epic MRA, they got pretty favorable results. So, the district decided to increase that bond proposal by 50%. And they took that to the voters, um, a $45 million proposal. And if you were watching, you know, I'm kind of a egghead when it comes to this. I was watching this uh election in particular because it was near a neighboring district of, uh, that we had an election going. They had over 3,800 voters vote on that and it went down by two votes. So, um, that's a tough one. And there's, and the Epic MRA data showed that, you know, it was going to be a tough, a tough poll. So, there, that district is currently going through a recount. So, anyways, uh, Epic MRA, we do pay attention. And we tested a lot of things in this, uh, with the community here for Celine of a lot of the improvements. So, we tried to distill it down and, and these are the major points that Epic MRA came up with on our survey. One, we did test to see if the community would be supportive of a one-mil increase, which uh, my memory serves right, it, it would have generated over 200 million, like 220 some million for improvements. And um, the community was, was not supportive of that. And to give you some numbers, what Epic MRA usually recommends is if their data comes back and it indicates a total yes support of whatever we're testing of 60% or higher, they consider that a favorable plan. And their level of accuracy uh for the size survey they did for you is about 4.9%. So, that's why they are saying, anything over 60%, you'll have a high confidence that the broader community will support it, okay? So, for a millage increase, a one-mil increase, that received a total yes support of 51% uh from the voters that they, they interviewed. Um, we also, um, you know, as we were doing the assessment and educational survey, we also um looked at a potential field house that could serve a lot of programs, uh, for the district. That field house um only received a total yes of 48%. Um, so, um, excuse me, 49% total yes. So, that clearly did not resonate with the broader community. And you got to remember, they're, they're trying to really reach the people that aren't really connected to the district um that go to vote. So, um, that was a, a pretty definitive uh response. Infrastructure, security, educational items were strongly supported, a low of 63% uh to as high as 72%. And that really resonates with even your 2015 bond that was supported. So, the community is still um on track with supporting those type of improvements. So, we did look at $180 million proposal, which as you saw on the earlier slide, would be a 0.5 mil decrease. Um, that received 64% total yes. So, again, pretty favorable, um, which is part of the reason we're presenting that today to, or tonight. The other thing we looked at is, um, one thing we looked at, of all the bond proposals that voted that, uh, just this two, last past Tuesday on a third, of the zero-mil increase bonds, 80% of those bond proposals passed. Now, we've experienced in years uh past, that number being higher for zero-mil. So, 20% of the zero-mils that were, went to the voters on a third, went down. Um, so a zero-mil is, is not really a slam dunk uh for a lot of districts. And there's a lot of reasons why we're coming to you tonight for 0.5. One, we can do a lot of great things for the district for 180 million. But also, two, we think this will resonate well with the community that the district is actually looking to, to um go for a proposal that would be a 0.5 mil decrease. So, we had Epic MRA look at the data and see, would we turn off voters by doing that? Or would we gain more undecideds? And it was clear that we would gain uh more yes voters from undecided than we would lose by going with a point five. Because, you know, and especially the people that are connected to the school, they want you to do as much as you can, but. Um, so we, we paid really close attention to that. Plus, we're, uh, we have a future slide here that'll tell you, you know, kind of what's going on in the community that's affecting the taxpayers' pocketbook. So, I think um this speaks well to the district being sensitive to what the taxpayers are facing.
Thanks, Rob. If I was really sharp, I would have had those students stay and sing, "Life Could Be a Dream With Sweetheart." Came a little late for me. Um, so, but I'm going to bring that on the show, on the road somewhere along the line. But, uh, so the bond proposal, some of the key pieces that we're going to talk about, just so you're aware, just so you guys can see what we have from like an education, from the education standpoint. Uh, some of the things that we have, this is currently, um, we're really looking at expanding our innovative labs. We have innovative uh classes for our elective at the, at the K5, K5 level. And then we have a number of classes that are STEAM related at the middle school, Project Lead the Way, and going up to the high school with robotics, Project Lead the Way, and other classes that could use these spaces. And these spaces are looking at adding additions to four of the six schools. Not huge additions, but enough additions that we could reallocate some of our spaces. For example, most of the innovative labs are in classrooms right now and they are, they're basically made up of IKEA furniture. Not there's anything wrong with IKEA furniture, but when you're doing innovative labs and STEAM and Jenny, I know you, you've done the, the IKEA furniture stuff. Uh, this is, would really bring up uh some spark to the students who are learning about science, technology, education. This would really bring up some spark to the students who are learning about science, technology, education, and arts and mathematics. So, this would be not only a space that could be used during the school day, but be used after school for a lot of our groups. This example there is a robotics storage room, but that's their class they use for all the robotics students that use that little space. There's a hallway in the basement of our high school. They, they've taken pride in it. But they could have so much more if we were able to give them more space and different things. Another thing that we looked at is some outdoor learning spaces, actually really looking at playgrounds in our case, five buildings. That's just an example of a playground that is Woodland Meadows and I was the principal there. And almost all our, I mean, it just, it's, it, most playgrounds were developed by PTAs and hard work and sweat and buying money. But really doing enhancement to include inclusive, an inclusive playground for all students. We are doing a piece for Pleasant Ridge who put a bond or asked for a, what was it, scholarship grant? Thank you. I couldn't think of the word grant. Thanks, Grant. Or thanks, Kurt. But anyway, so we got some money coming from the foundation, the PTA, and then along with some of our sinking fund money that will help support a space there at Pleasant Ridge, which would be helpful for, but that was an area that resonated with a lot of our PTA families. Classrooms, just, we have, in the bond proposal will be updates and, and furniture and, and spanning of all of our buildings over the next 10 years as well. Some of our facility projects, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Clary.
So, the operations center. So, the, we formed a capital projects committee last spring and we started meeting and discussing projects. And we talked about how we could improve central campus. The traffic flow in and around central campus for those 20 minutes of arrival and departure and putting students in danger along Maple Road, how could we improve that? Could we generate possibly a second entrance for the senior center? I know that was one thing that superintendent, former superintendent Grayden talked about. What about electric buses and infrastructure, solar? Could we fit it in the space that we have and where we're at as located on the middle school campus? And at the end of the day, it became apparent that transportation really needs to get out of the way. We take up a lot of space to effectively use that space. We need to be located hopefully between the middle school and the high school on a piece of property that's efficiently, you know, we can get to very easily. This will allow the middle school, our spaces at the middle school to turn into a STEAM center for the middle school. It'll allow cosmetology to move in to a space and we can give up their leased space that we're currently paying for at Country Creek in the State Street in Michigan Ave. Our middle school athletic facilities need to be updated immediately, track and tennis. Our weight room at the high school needs additional square footage for the amount of students and the, and a ground floor location would be ideal instead of causing damage to the floor. And really, there's, it's unusable space underneath that weight room at the high school right now. The high school would also receive bathroom and concession facilities for varsity softball and baseball. We would also turf those fields. So, yesterday was the first day of the spring that our athletic director, Ashley Mantha, didn't cancel a competitive event for spring sports. So, we feel that that turf will help enable us to keep our schedules, keep the students playing and moving forward with athletics.
And as we continue to look into the future, cause again, this proposal, if passed in November, would only, would only, wouldn't begin to like the fall of 2023 and then span out from there for the next 10 years. So, we're, we're investing in a lot of things. Our safety and security is always something that we continue to look at and review as time goes on. We'd have the, the funds provided for that. That's actually the middle school sound system and, and computers. Is that what that is, Jay? Yeah, that's just sitting out in the open in the back room. It actually has some of those old speakers that they, they used back in the seventies and fifties. But then we always continue with our technology updates. That's something that we do every few years and so this, this proposal would help us not have to dip into the general fund to spend those type of things. And then Rex can talk a little bit more about the future of our infrastructure and keeping our facilities top-notch for everybody.
We all know how schools are funded. Majority of those funds are tied up over 85% in benefits and salary. There's not a lot of money for infrastructure needs. Yes, we just completed four buildings of roofs, but the middle school, the high school and Harvest will also need roofs in the next 10 years. We'll continue to replace equipment, HVAC equipment. And these are all gonna be needs. Yes, our schools look great. You know, our schools look great. Our staff care about our stu, our schools. You walk out on these floors, our custodians take care of them. But we still need that piece to keep it going, to keep it going, moving forward.
So, this is kind of a snapshot on some of the main things, if you can see that, that is, are gonna be part of the bond proposal. Obviously, we talked about our, our STEAM spaces. We've talked, we're updating and looking at science labs at the high school, similar to what we did at a middle school. You look at the high schools now, as good, nice as it looks and it's almost 20 years old. Our career and technical education spaces. Rex talked about moving cosmetology, $60,000 a year for space that's there, could be mixed in with our senior center, who is part of our community education. And we have a space there for them as long, as well as talking about having a health space for them and built into their, their space as well. We talk about adding spaces for robotics. I know Dr. Roll would like to see cyber safety and, and EMT programs coming forward as well. Inclusive playground, playgrounds, as we mentioned, for outdoor learning spaces. Our educational technology and our furniture, that is something that's revolving all the time. Infrastructure, continuing to maintain in our district's assets. So, we currently are adding and have added Informercast, and I think Jay, you talked about Informercast? And, and we just received a grant for that and I know Dr. Lodge will touch on, touch on that a little bit later. But that, that's something that the, the district, I think, is, is important to have in all of our buildings at this point, because they link together. The Celine High School, Middle School roofs, as he's talked about, our middle school cafeteria, restrooms and locker room renovations. Those are things that needed to happen years ago. It's, it's an old school. But that's a chance for us to, to really design spaces that are safe and inclusive for all of our students. HVAC systems upgrades, again, continue. These are the infrastructure things that we continue to look at to keep our spaces looking really nice. Again, buses are there as well. And then upgrading our flooring and carpeting as the time goes on. And then the community, community and athletics piece. We want to continue to help support our senior center spaces, including their health center that we can add along with the cosmetology relocation, the facilities for baseball and softball. Not to mention you're playable, but the, over time, turf isn't required, all the maintenance and, and resources that we provide every day. High school weight room, because of the, a lot of, a lot of the reasons Rex talked about, but it is on top of a classroom. I don't know who designed this. It's not King Scott. But it was, it was below, it's below a classroom that they use for health. And so, they drop weights on it and then the infrastructure's going away. And Chelsea, Chelsea High School recently had to do the same thing, based on the same design. So, and then the middle school complex, really kind of taking this as not only a school thing, but it is a community piece. And I know if you come out here, if you live in this, around our athletic, our tracks, our tennis courts, all those things are used during nice times. So, basically, that's kind of where we're looking at. And that's one of the pieces, and we have obviously more things than the structure that we can be happy to sit down and talk with you about. So, what we're asking for our community, for our board of education, is that if we were to go forward with this, it'd be a .5 mill decrease to our taxpayers, going from 8.8 mills to 7.5 mills, which was also a promise we, we made when we passed in 2015, that we would not come back for more money, we'd come back from less, for, for less. And I'm gonna talk to Dr. Lodge on why a decrease.
Right. So, this is an area we spent a lot of time debating as to, is it a zero-mill renewal? Is it an increase or is it a decrease? And what we really came to realize is it's important to be thinking about this along with the city of Celine and what's happening with our residents and taxpayers. And so, we, we start with that first bullet of commitment to the Celine community and that's what David was just talking about, that in having previous discussions as it related to the 2015 bond, we were discussing coming back for a decrease of some sort as we moved to the next steps in this future bond renewal. The second one is the city of Celine upcoming utility increase. We are working with the city on this and, and understanding, you know, in conversations with Mayor Marl, that, you know, we're all talking about the water situation and that there is gonna be a utility rate increase. And so, we're sensitive to that too, to know that, you know, we can't think of the school district in a vacuum. It, it exists with our city services. And so, as we looked at a decrease, we felt, okay, there are, there are some areas that residents are looking at increases. And so, we wanted to be responsive and put together a proposal that actually factored that into the equation. And then the third bullet is surrounding entities considering millages in the future, whether that's police or fire or some of those other things that are gonna be coming through the city. Trying to look at the entire picture versus, again, the, the schools themselves in a vacuum. The other one, living within our means and practicing fiscal responsibility, that we do want to make sure that we are doing that. In other words, what is, you know, we spoke about 300 million in a needs assessment, but what do we really need to make sure that we're positioning the school district well moving forward versus what we also would want? And, and the belief is that what we really need is that 180 million dollar range over the next many years. The other part that we want people to realize too, is it's not just bonds that we are looking for in terms of generating funding. It's other resources and a couple of them were mentioned earlier in that Jay, Miranda and Rex all actively sought a security bond. And as a result, $240,000 were awarded so that we could continue our security upgrades in our buildings. In addition, Jay and the technology department have secured $300,000 in Chromebook costs through grant resources. So, we are actively looking and being responsible to generate other revenue sources. It's just that bonding is a really important part of how school districts operate so that we're not having to tap into the general fund. And so, taking all these factors into consideration, this is why we ultimately are looking to reduce from eight mills to 7.5 mills as we look forward to a November election.
So, I guess ultimately our goal is to have you guys take a look at the proposal, sit down with us, meet with us, talk with us at any point and, and really by the May 24th meeting, if we can, we get approval to move forward or, or not. And that's basically where we're at this point. Obviously, we're open for any questions at this point. We may not be able to answer everything, but if we can't, we can definitely get the answers to you as well. Susan?
Thank you. Oh, hey, hang on one second. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone and wanted to mention, one of the reasons we're not voting on something like this tonight is to give the community at least two opportunities for public comment on this as well. Either by being at a board meeting, emailing us, et cetera. So, that's one of the reasons it's not on for vote tonight. Yeah, Susan?
So, I have, excuse me. I have many questions, so I might ask a couple at first. But you had mentioned us seeing the proposal. We haven't seen anything as far as specific plans or even, you know, details of estimates, budget, that kind of thing. So, I hope we get that soon. I don't know if that's being planned for us to be able to see it. Maybe not three or four days before the, our board meeting, next, the next board meeting, but ahead of time. And along with that, can we get a tour with some board members here and there? So, yeah, I'm just throwing that out there.
Tour of, of spaces that we're thinking about and?
Yeah, just some of the renovations or additions, that kind of thing.
And some of the things I have not been designed 100% only because we're bringing them to the place and then, you know, if we go, we go forward, then it's time for the, the design team and then community members to get, like we did, when we did the parking lot out here at Heritage in, what am I, I, I actually was running that focus group with Rob when he was not the president at the time. And we had a lot of family members come in and help give us ideas on how this should flow and how this should look. Apparently, it's not working as good as it did when it opened, but we opened more schools. But anyway, so, yes, that's definitely a piece. And Rob, you wanna talk to the finance part of it?
So, you know, with the treasury bond application, it's, it's a fairly complicated document. So, we have been working on preparing a kind of overall summary for board members that outlines what we're doing at each building, the level of investment for technology, for furniture, and kind of capturing it to where it's easily understood. I will say, there's a lot of things that we have to factor in a treasury application. Escalation, you know, we're dealing with a lot of issues like that, election costs, those type of things. So, we've been working on that and our intent is to provide that so that you can easily, if asked, well, what are you doing at Woodland Meadows? Well, let me tell you what we're doing and here's the five or six things. Certainly, we have a lot more data that supports that, but that's what we've been working on to get it in a very easily understood format. Now, the, the other thing I will speak to, you know, we have a lot of improvements for all the STEAM groups and almost all the buildings. We did do conceptual designs in order to set adequate budgets. You know, we took it to that point. There is conceptual things that we can share and, and if you have questions, you know, we met with, with those groups. Very passionate groups, I must say. And, but we got a lot of great feedback and David's been meeting with them as we've developed further things that are now in this 180 million dollar proposal and they're excited. So, you know, and I'm sure those are the things that you guys are gonna wanna see. Just to give you some sense of how much of that 80, 180 million is divided up, I did some rough percentages, so these are approximate. But approximately 56% of this bond proposal is going to building infrastructure and safety type improvements. So, what Rex was speaking to, roofs, improvements to, you know, boilers, bathroom updates, those type of things. For, we have 29% of the bond that's going to basically education and STEAM. So, this is kind of taken like the 2015 bond was warm, safe and dry. We're still continuing on that theme, but we're really enhancing the education and especially those STEAM programs. So that, so 29% goes towards education. That leaves 15%, that's that community athletics piece. So, that will at least give you a sense of the proportion of this bond and how it's hitting those three general areas. But hopefully that helps.
To answer your question, we'll get more specific numbers from you guys and. And also some of the renderings that we have at this point as well.
Great. So, this is, as you were saying, I, I did a little research on, on all of this and that application. It's preliminary, right, before you start the application and the board approves that before you go into that whole process.
Yeah, you have a formal process that Trune has laid out for your attorneys. So, what we would be asking on the 24th is approval of the bond scope that we've developed for the 180 million. And then Clark and King Scott, that's basically given us the green light to put together the applica, we call it a bond application, but it's preliminary qualification of bonds is what it's called. And if you've ever, I don't know if you actually looked at one, but we, we have to follow treasury requirements. So, we, we really convert what we've developed now into the treasury format and have proper dollars for everything.
So, no guarantees on whatever we do see, right? You're talking about the cost and stuff, yeah.
I mean, it's still, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to build off something Susan said and appreciate the percentages. We talked about this a little bit in finance and Brad and I were in agreement and, and wanting to see, you know, whether it's a pie chart or something. I like the sound of this brief. So, my follow-up question is, will that be shared with our community? And how will we be communicating possible? And how will we be communicating possible details to our community partners so parents, guardians, seniors, everyone living in Celine is informed to vote?
Well, that's, that's part of the process. Once we get the scope approved, then it becomes the marketing campaign. It's going to take all of us to be part of this. As school entities, we are not to be able to say vote or vote yes or vote no, we're going to be there to say vote. And we are going to put as much together. Clark Construction has a promotions team as well that will come in and they have this laid out and this will be similar to what we did in 2015. We'll be holding community groups, we'll have our champion teams coming out. There may be people that will be against this, as we know, and that's, you know, we got to continue to inform as much about all the good things that will be coming forward. And that's when the designs and renderings will start to develop where you can see everything that's, that's been part of this as well. And really focusing this on what our students are getting for the future, so.
And so, and you might not have the answer, and if you don't, don't make it up and you can get back to us. But when do you think a marketing campaign might start or information going to the community that's a little bit more specific per building and what it's doing for the students? Like, if the vote is November 8th, when does that kind of launch in the community to give them information?
Yeah, well, absentee ballot is 45 days prior to that, so we have to even back it up even further. So, it will be, it'll be, I'd almost say, you can talk about it, but early June.
So, so how, for a November election, what we're initially working for is the treasury review meeting of the application. And Miranda, I don't know the, I think it's in beginning of July. So after that happens and treasury approves the application, then during that time, we are starting to prepare for the campaign. And the idea is to launch the campaign when school starts in the fall, because that's when all our families are back, all the students are back. And then nowadays, the other thing we're studying in these last several elections with the change in the absentee voting, you really do two, two campaigns. You do a soft start, which is geared towards informing your absentee voters of what the bond proposal is. And then after you hit that absentee, you know, once the absentee ballots come out, then we start working towards getting people mobilized to vote on vote day. But to answer your question, the campaign would be ready to launch once school starts is typically how we approach it.
Okay, thank you. Brad?
I'll go now. We did indeed talk about the breakdowns and what have you, and I will tell you flat out that I'm very interested and thankful too for the summary slash brief document that will come to us. So, that is that. I will also say that, you know, with an 11-year-old and a 14-year-old in our schools, I'm very interested in STEAM programs and the extraordinary work that they're doing that we're supporting those kinds of things. I could tell you that I was over at our, our middle school and watching, you know, at Crabtree watching lacrosse and the track is, you know, coming apart and those kinds of things are there. So I was happy to see that, but I'll tell you that, that brief and that summary document will be, will be important to me.
Well, I run at that track for a lot of years. I hate to admit it, but I tripped about a week ago because of the same thing, kind of fell off the side, so, yeah. It was light blue underneath it about 20 years ago.
So a couple of things as I was hearing the presentation tonight. First, I want to say thank you for listening to the community, for doing all of that work. I think that it's evident that it wasn't a plan that, it wasn't a plan that was pre-cooked. It wasn't David's idea, it wasn't Steve's idea, it was a plan that you took to the community and you listened and you responded. And so I just really appreciate that and that that is what is going to help to make our students and our schools most successful. So, I can see in the presentation tonight just that thread of really listening, like having ideas, but going into it, listening, and then changing and shifting and adapting to be responsive. So, I love that. I also, as you were laying out the percentages, I'm sorry, can you tell me your co-presenter there?
Rob.
Can you tell me your name? Rob, thanks. Rob, as I was listening to the percentages and you said 56 and 29 and 15, and for me in hearing this presentation tonight and in just hearing your responsiveness to the community, the number that stands out to me is that it's 100% student-focused. And so, I feel really strongly as we get more information that that'll continue, but I know I speak for myself, but I also speak for our board and for our community and for our administration and teachers and everyone in our community that the bottom line for us is that it's 100% student-focused. And so I can hear and see that too. I do want to say two things. First, Rex, I'm really sorry I didn't recognize you earlier in the last presentation, but I want you to know that we really appreciate the work that you're doing, the innovative ideas that you have to incorporate students in spaces that maybe they haven't been before. So, I wanted to say that. I forgot earlier, so I apologize for that. I also want to thank anyone who's been involved, Miranda and Jay and others who've been working hard to generate revenue in other places. And speaking of revenue, I wonder if one of you can speak a little bit about the thing that I think I see and hear over and over again from our community is, you know, we're spending money in some places. So we're adding, like for example, tonight, we talked about a secondary MTSS coordinator, definitely needed and definitely going to benefit students and outcomes for those, for our students. But then, when you're running a bond campaign, people then say like, oh, well, they're adding that, but now they're asking for this. And so, being in education, I understand that there are some things that can come from the general fund and there are other things that can't come from the general fund. So I wondered if someone could address that, and it doesn't have to be tonight, it could be even in that packet. But I think one thing that we can do as a board and as leaders in the district is to educate a little bit more about what can come from the general fund and what doesn't come from the general fund. I think, let me just see here. Oh, speaking of new roofs and things like that, I was in the building catching water in a trash can in my classroom, so appreciate the new roofs and appreciate that you've done work to modify the material that was used for the new roof so that they're sustainable for a longer period of time. So, being, I just appreciate the innovation and the forward thinking so that we can be just good stewards of these, stewards of these funds. Lastly, the two things that I just want to touch on, the cosmetology and the location, the proposed location potentially of that cosmetology program. I just, as soon as you mentioned it, could see the connection to our community add into our senior center and how that can really benefit community partners. So, I thought that was a really innovative and neat way of thinking about things. And lastly, thank you for thinking about the softball and baseball fields and the turf and the, and the bathrooms especially, bathrooms and concession stands. I know that that has been, having two kids who are sophomores right now, that has been a concern to many of their friends who've had washed out games and also the problem with the bathrooms just being far away and having to use those porta-potties is not always something that our kids like to do, so I appreciate that. So I, I guess the bottom line is that I just am really, really appreciative of the work that you've done, thinking about our STEAM spaces and just, again, just that theme of listening. So, I appreciate that.
I have a few questions, Rob. If I could, if I could go back to the data conversation that we started off with. You had mentioned in working with other school districts that the firm who made the phone calls had a 65% passage rate, so seven districts who had a bond passed on May 3rd. How many?
Well, that was a state, so I, that, all the bond proposals that were voted on Tuesday, 65% of them passed, all the qualified bonds.
Okay, and how many, do you know how many school districts that passed worked with that organization?
Seven.
Seven. Of how many, how many districts had a bond? Do you know?
Um.
I was just, I was just curious.
Yes, I do.
And you can always email too.
Yeah, and quite honestly, we're still studying the data, because?
It just happened, I know.
Well, and it's something that we, we really focus on.
I'm not the data specialist that David is, but I like, I like to understand voting trends, so.
So we?
27, okay.
Yeah, that's the number I have. Yeah, there we go. All right.
Well, excellent answer.
Yes.
And so, when talking about phone calls and calling, I think it was 400 families or individuals, I was just curious, because it might come up, why wasn't like an electronic survey? So a lot of times when we reach out to people in our school district, we use electronic surveying. So I was just curious why it was a phone call versus surveys.
So I'll do my bet, the great thing about Epic MRA is the way they survey. So they have a conversation and, one, they really try to capture the demographics of the community. So, they were, you know, they probably made close to 2,000 calls to get to the 400 that they felt wasn't the proper sample size. And they have a group of questions that are more geared to someone that maybe, may not be very supportive of the district. And they ask, they test our, you know, the scenarios we gave them, they test it and to see how they respond. And they have another group of questions for people that they clearly can tell are supportive of the district and they try to challenge that and see if that, they can get them the sway. So they're very scientific and, you know, John Kavanaugh is who our contact was with Epic MRA, and he can really speak to the science of how they do it. It's pretty impressive and I don't want to dare try to explain, but it's not, they don't approach it like, do you support a field house, yes or no? What they do is they give a lot of facts. And do you support a field house that is going to benefit not only athletics, but the marching band and other, and they get, and they put the context behind the thing they're testing. So, because with any voter who maybe isn't as informed, they're going to put things in their head based on their experiences, so they try to inform them. One of the other things they do is they'll ask you a certain series of questions without much backup to see how they respond. And then they say, well, if you know this, then they provide the backup, does that change your vote? Do you now support? And they'll see if, we look at that data really closely because that tells us what's the potential of our campaign moving undecided voters to yes voters. And for this survey, it was interesting, the needle didn't move very much once they were given more facts. So that's another reason we got leery of the zero mil. And then what we started to learn from the community, it became really clear that, you know, we have to take that into account. So, if you would like, I can, you know, Epic MRA can give you the data on the scientific approach that they use. It's really interesting and the feedback that they give and how, and the, yeah.
Well, I think if it's, if it's information that they share, I think to read about it would be, would be interesting during the last conference for our Professional Development Association, the Michigan Association of School Boards. I attended several that were around passing a bond, just to kind of get information and get some, get some opportunities to learn, and so I think it would be, it would be interesting.
It would be interesting to see that. I'm also happy to talk with anybody else on the board who's interested, that's actually the, the process of that, doing that type of poll is part of what I did my PhD on, so I'd be, I'd be happy to chat.
Well, there you go.
I can probably give you way more, way more details than you want to know.
Okay, I will, I'll take you up on that. I would, I would love to, love to know that. You brought up the field house, so I'm going to bring up the field house. I mean, I think it's, it's no secret that this is something that's been discussed in our community for a long time, considering our ranking in state athletics and considering opportunities for usage outside of athletics with robotics, with the ceilings and graduation, homecoming proms, things like that. So, I guess, I would like a little bit more information on the justification to remove that from, from part of the bond. Because what I heard, I heard one mention and it was 49% said that was a total yes on the field house, so that's just about a 50%. I was just wondering if you had any, any more details on that because?
We can provide.
The feedback, just, just, I'm sure everybody gets lots of feedback. For years, the feedback that I have received is that that is something that's desired in the community, so I was a little bit surprised.
Yeah, and, and that doesn't surprise me. So remember, the margin of error for the, this survey was like 4.9%. So even though it was 49%, it could be actually 4.9% less than that or more. The other thing is athletics in general scored very low. And none of our, you know, the athletic improvements, there's a perception out there that the survey did tap into that Celine area schools has fantastic athletic facilities. So, so that's kind of what you're going up against, especially for people that aren't connected and don't really know how a field house can serve a district. Now certainly, within the school community, it would score much higher because they, you know, people understand, so. But we tackled athletics in the field house multiple ways in the survey and everything was well below 60%, so. And we can, I can give you more of the data on the survey. The report actually, they do a nice executive summary and, of the report. So we have that and that can be provided to you as well if you want to really dive into the nitty-gritty.
I think we'd like it, yeah. Yeah, executive summary, that sounds good. I mean, we don't need to get too, too much in the weeds, but understanding the philosophy around the survey, I think helps inform opinions up here. So, executive summary, the brief that you mentioned, sounds very good to me. I also wanted to pause because I should have said this straight away, I love that this presentation started with our 2015 bond that was essential to the school district.
Oh, yeah.
I was a Pleasant Ridge parent in 2015 and living with a building that had our principal's office in the middle, and so those doors were always open and everyone had to walk through the building and, in front of the B hall to get to that, that office, and we were so grateful. And now we're seeing the, the ending time of that bond at our middle school with a gymnasium that has really, really needed some love for a very long time. So, thank you to the voters for the 2015 bond. I did want to make sure I said that. So appreciated that you started the presentation with that, David.
Yeah.
I am really looking forward to seeing some of the details because you tossed out a few terms like solar, I heard thrown out in the long list, and innovative. I still have no, I can't hang my hat on, on either of those words until we have more detail. And as for turf, I'm concerned about long-range costs and so forth, but you know better than I, if turf is the way to go, great. And I'm also curious about when you talk about the weight room expansion or shoring up or whatever it is they're going to do, it sounds like there's a lot of physically moving. Sounds like there's going to be a lot of rearrangement within the schools of use and that sort of thing. So again, devil's going to be hiding in a lot of those details and you're thinking that we might be able to get some of that by when? That was unclear to me.
End of the week?
Yeah, I think end of the week could certainly get you a lot of this information and then respond to questions.
Great, because, you know, I'm fascinated to see how the robotics hallway will turn into something, whoops, something much grander. And, and I'm excited about it. If the people you're talking to are excited, I trust you, but I, trust but verify, right? I'm really looking forward to hearing more details, so.
So our 2015 bond application, it's a line item with a square footage. It's a, I'm sorry, for the 2015 bond application, there were some renderings, but it's normally a line item with square footage and a cost to remodel or build that space. We haven't done any fine tuning of any of these spaces yet. We're all in the design and development. Nothing's cooked, I guess, cooked plant, because we've got a lot of input, we've got to grab from all these groups to, to design the details.
The reason, one of the other reasons I'm throwing this out is because as the public hear this, they're going to, they're going to want the nitty-gritty questions too. So I, so we're not dampening expectations, but clarifying expectations, what should they expect to see from us two weeks from now when we, when we vote? They're not going to be seeing renderings of a great STEM room or?
Yeah, we have those. I can show you those. That we have.
All right.
Okay, so you'll see, they'll see the renderings of what the space is outlined and looked like at the four buildings, but you won't know what they look like on the inside because the inside won't be done.
That's okay, but the public will see some of these, all right. Great, thank you. These, all right, great, thank you.
Those I can send you tonight.
Me too. Um, David and Rob probably also, um, another thing that would be helpful is we don't need to get in, into the weeds of where does the weight room go? But I know it's in a very small area and it's on the second floor. Like, a detailed follow-up on, are we constructing, um, an extension of a building or something? So, when, when we talk about, um, things like transportation relocation or we talk about things like the weight room or the robotics hallway, it would just be interesting to know, I think, overall, does this mean a new construction? Is this a build out? Is this a repurposing of, in, within the existing Celine High School structure? Just to kinda get some kind of a lens? You don't have to tell me where you're putting the weight room, whatever you guys wanna do, it's fine with me. But like, what's the, what's the anticipated plan for, for construction, build out or?
And I apologize cuz I could've showed you the, there is a, it's coming out of the front of the high school by the, the sign where the steam lab and the weight room will be connected together coming forward. At Woodland Meadows will be two rooms coming out off the teacher's lounge. At Heritage, five rooms are coming off the side, two, three of them being steam spaces. And then Pleasant Ridge has one coming off the front of the school, uh, by the tower where the clock is. And really making a cool, cuz they're, cuz they're actually doing a little, redoing some of the parking lot and design and all that. So, those are designed right now, uh, the best locations in those buildings that you could add on to. So, those, I can show you the renderings of those, but nothing done on the inside, just kind of an outline of what it looks like.
No, that's great, that answers the question, so appreciate that.
Can I just, um, manage expectations? So, one, uh, no, we, we have worked up concepts that we know will work, but it's, it's an idea. But we've done it in, in not a very large collaborative bubble, I should say. Because when we do a formal design process, we meet with all the users of that. But we've came up with some really cool ideas on how to do the weight room and the steam addition as one addition and, and creating some synergy that way. And same, same thing with some of the other buildings, we've gotten really creative. So, everything we're showing you could easily change once the bond passes and we do a formal design process. So, I just wanna, what you see is a concept that works, but it's not set in stone. And one of the things we are careful about in a campaign is we don't wanna get too much out in the public because I've, I've seen voters go to the polls and say, you know what? I don't like the color of that addition, I'm voting no. And it, you know, it's, so we're, we, we put out enough information to inform the voter. But also, we try to pull back a little bit because of some of those things. So, again, um, we've done a lot of work, we've done a lot of concepting with the small focus groups that we've worked with. We'll provide you that and you can see, and, and that's also to the information Clark takes to develop the budgets that we need for those projects.
Okay, consider, consider some expectations managed. But I think it's a, but I think it's important to understand that we're being creative and innovative and, and we need to be flexible. And I think this community is flexible as we continue to talk and move forward. You know, ideas can change, but generally, the theme and strategy is understood.
Yep.
Yep, and we're held to that bond application. So, in two thousand fifteen, it was all about safe, warm and dry. We couldn't build a structure with any of those funds. It was strictly safe, warm and dry. We, those funds were allocated to these projects. So, with this bond, now we'll be putting in new spaces. Um, it'll, and then they'll hold us to that application as well in ten years, same way, so.
Um, so, you mentioned, um, groups that you all have, uh, worked with. Um, and I know you'll probably work with more groups, like, as you said, um, with the further, after it gets approved and everything. Um, who was involved in some of these, um, generating some of these ideas? Um, were students involved at all, staff? I know some families were involved, which is great. Um, so, if you could talk about that a little more.
Yeah, we did help, we held a, we actually held two forums with students. Uh, one of, some of the students were at our, some of our students were at our steam one. Uh, we have swung back to them as well. They gave us a lot of great feedback, um, pretty direct feedback, uh, but positive. Uh, uh, we've had focus groups with our students, we've had, we've met with our senior centers, we've met with our performing arts people. Um, we met with Rotary, athletic groups came in, um, city of Celine people. So, we just tried to get a feel for that. And based on what we had as a, the needs assessment came off of staff and administrators and then the Capital Projects team that started that a year ago. And so, there was the feedback that was coming that way.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, one, one other quick question. Um, Rex, you mentioned the tra- the, the move, uh, like relocation of transportation. Is that in land that we currently own? Is that in, how, how is that gonna work? Cuz I know we do own some land over near the high school. So, can you speak a little bit about that?
Uh, it is not land we currently own. Um, we own the corner of Michigan Ave, of course, um, which is a hot commodity at times until they realize the cost of infrastructure to get water and sewer. Um, it would be someplace, but we've looked at the Pacifica, we've talked to the Pacifica, um, fuel station. Um, it's Stan? Industrial Park, yes. Um, there's eight acres there, only five of it's buildable. I've reached out to Gary Ruble. Um, I've had discussions with Gary, I've not had discussions with Mr. O'To- or Kath, Mrs. O'Toole, um, at the city. But we've looked at some pieces, we've talked to a realtor. Uh, but we have not put any, uh, funds down or held any pieces of property yet.
Is there a reason we wouldn't use land that we currently own that's not being utilized?
We looked at that place, uh, next to Weber Blythe, um, but that could be a different facility at some point down the road. Um, and the only other place then would be the, the, the corner of Michigan Ave or behind that hard corner of Michigan Ave and State Street. And I think that's a valuable piece, which could possibly, I think, was, uh, could be another educational facility, um, at some point. Um, but we would probably purchase land in the instruct- industrial park at a far less cost, I guess, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that, that definitely makes sense. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions?
Slide eight, right here, Rex.
Six-three.
Any other comments or questions for anyone? Okay.
We, we look forward to getting you out, more information. Again, in the meantime, if you think of stuff, shoot us emails, questions.
Yeah, that sounds good. Let's, let's, let's funnel them with, through to David, CC to Steve, if, if any other questions pop up.
Perfect, thank you.
Information that we want, okay. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our only action item of the evening. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the WISD twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget as submitted.
So moved, Gerbi.
Brad, thank you.
Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. Uh, discussion, Michael, would you like to lead this?
I would be delighted and Ben is gonna fire up a PowerPoint of some sort, is that correct, Steve? Right. And I will not make the annoying beep noises, uh, although I'm pretty good at it. The first slides, the first two slides have a picture of a, there it is, and the one before, there, nope, before. Yeah. So, um, I think everyone received in their packet, um, a number of pages and pages of actual details. And what we're gonna, what I'm gonna do in the next, I'm gonna keep it to five to six minutes or less is to give you some of the highlights. Uh, the, the additional information is there. And, um, uh, on those multiple pages, just give me one second to grab my notes. So, if you're ready, um, as you know, every year, uh, the, um, WISD releases, and this is mostly for David who, uh, Trusty Hayward, who wasn't here for this last year. And for the rest of you, a quick review, uh, WISD, um, pardon me. Uh, WISD's budget needs to come before each of the nine, uh, school districts in the month of May. And, uh, we need to return it to them with an approval or disapproval, uh, at, by June first. So, uh, Betty Yonkey has the documents and, uh, here it is in a nutshell. Uh, there were two basic funds. One of the funds is the, uh, is the special education, uh, fund, the other is the general fund. So, I'm just gonna give you some of the highlights of the, the changes that happened. And, and, uh, I think in, uh, spoiler alert, the budget hasn't changed very much and, uh, from year over year. Uh, so, um, I'm delighted to see that. So, the first, this first slide is that yes, property taxes, so, let's talk about the fund revenue changes, uh, taxes. Property taxes have increased. The state is putting more money into the, uh, uh, Office of Retirement Services and the assets. Sorry, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. And I say that for Miranda cuz she's got an air horn. If I say anything that's incorrect, you're gonna let me know, right? Right. Uh, there has been no increased budgeted for higher, uh, special education reimbursement from the state. So, we've got that. Next slide. Um, there's no carryover. And, uh, the other interesting thing is that the IDEA, uh, the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, American Rescue Plan, uh, gave a hundred and thirty billion, awarded a hundred and thirty billion to the US Department of Education. And, uh, two point four billion goes to, uh, the IDEA Part B. And we in Wasna get two hu- two point four million, actually a little bit more than that. But, uh, one of their, uh, that revenue will go toward a particular program dealing with autistic students, students on the autistics, autism spectrum. So, let's go to the next slide. Um, expenditure changes also. So, this, this talks about now the money that's going out. Uh, they are going to establish a centralized program for students, uh, on the spectrum, uh, with significant behavioral challenges. This isn't general funding for special ed, this is for a particular group. It's to be funded at twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, with this money. And, uh, they have plans for a, a just, you know, that could be left high and dry when the money runs out. This is a one-time expenditure they're aware of. In addition, they are gonna be spending, uh, money, seven hundred and fifty million for countywide professional development. Uh, this was strongly recommended by all the superintendents and, uh, the state. Go to the next one. They've added a number of things, three point five FTE, uh, they've added one teacher, they decreased a teacher. And instead of three superintendents, we now have Naomi Norman. And, uh, that has, um, tamped down some of the costs at, at the highest end, um, of salaries. Let's talk about the, uh, special education fund changes also. Uh, the, uh, the gap generally accept- accepted accounting practices or principles, uh, now are seeing, uh, the rent expenses they had are on a slightly different line or column. They're now considered a debt payment. The budget assumes all vacancies filled, uh, in, assumes step increases for all the teachers, assumes an increase in salary and wages, increase in healthcare as well. And, uh, but if you notice the last line, the budget, basically, it's estimated at sixty-three million. And right now, we're at sixty-two point seven. So, it's extraordinarily close to what they're budgeting right now. Look at the next line. You'll see also, this is their fund balance. Now, their fund balance looks a little different than ours does. They don't use percentages, it's their millions. Um, they have stayed pretty close to roughly three million in, in reserve for the last, uh, as you can see how many years they've kept that going. Which, so, uh, they're very proud of that and I'm quite pleased with that as well. So, that gives you an indicator of the, the strength of their budget. Can we go to the next slide? And I think, oh, good. Uh, we're now looking at the general fund. And here, there's sources of revenues and if you're all nerdy and things like that, you can break it down and figure out, uh, where most of the money is going, coming from to fund, uh, WISD's, uh, programs. So, the next one. Uh, and there wasn't anything particularly interesting in that last slide, except, uh, that if you can go back just one, the state grant, uh, expenditures, the little green one is down a little bit. Um, because, and go to the next slide and we'll find out why. It's because of an elimination of the statewide kindergarten readiness assessment funding, which you know all about, so. I know. So, uh, in addition, uh, there is a, they're budgeting for continued funding of the Health Resource Advocate and it assumes no grant revenue other than what they call their thirty-one N. And that is a mental health and support services grant opportunity. Beep. Uh, the next time, the expenditures now, let's look at the changes of expenditures. They're a little lower this year, which is good. Um, and, and it was noted, uh, one of the other slides noticed it, uh, noted it. There is, um, budgeting for continued funding of that particular grant, uh, fully funding. Uh, now, oh, here's an interesting thing. One of the ways they're reducing their costs is, uh, there was a general need and it was, uh, heard from the superintendent at, was it, was it IPSI, Community Schools? Who was saying, um, there is a real push now to have more and more training after school, virtually, remotely. Uh, to, and it also, the, the, um, the consequence of that is the saving on substitute teachers, which, number one, they're expensive, number two, they're hard to find, anyway. So, there's a, a great, uh, savings in that respect. So, the next slide. Uh, the transition to a superintendent position, to a permanent superintendent, thank you, Naomi. Uh, all vacancies fills, all steps increased, uh, one point five salary increase, self-care, same as before. And the last slide is the one that needs a little tiny bit of explanation. It looks like we're plummeting down a steep cliff here. Those last, uh, two, two data points, four one seven million and three point three, those are, uh, estimates. They, every year, I mean, we're early in the process. April is a bit early in their, in their year. They're still expecting funding to come in from the feds, from the state. And that usually will probably top us up near to where it was last year. So, if you look at this slide this time next year, you'll see that it's looking a bit like a plateau at the top, not a, a steep, steep plummet. We've been assured by, uh, Andrew Marcel, their superintendent for finance, that, uh, this is the way it's been for the last fifteen years. There's always an adjustment and it's always an adjustment to the positive. So, I'm strongly supportive of this budget. And here's what we, we can do, uh, once we take the vote on this, is if we do vote to approve, um, which is, is great. Uh, if we have issues with it or you have a particular query or concern about expenses, uh, please, we'll make a note and send that up and they will, they will take that under advisement, under, um. But it doesn't mean, w- we might be absolutely horrified by one of the expenses. This is our chance to let them know. And, uh, with that, I will wrap it up and, and answer, and attempt in a very lame fashion to answer any questions you might have with Steve's help and with Miranda's help. And seeing no, oh. Jenny?
No, I just wanted to clarify just a couple of things for anybody who might be watching and is super nerdy about this. But, um, first of all, the kindergarten readiness, readiness assessment, um, the elimination of that, while it's a savings, um, that was, um, that was something that was pre-pandemic. And I'm, I wanna say it was John Hopkins is where, is where that research came from. But, um, the thing, the reason why that, that particular assessment was valuable is because it was giving information to pre-kindergarten programming. So, um, they were, they were hoping to assess students as they entered kindergarten so that they could make decisions about the types of support and programmings that are needed for our, um, preschool programs. So, um, while it's a savings to the budget, it is a little bit sad to see that, that we don't have that information moving forward. However, because it was relatively new, when, um, the pandemic, um, struck and schools were closed, it would take, um, a lot of effort to bring that back. So, um, that's just one point of clarification. The other thing that I just wanted to note here, as, um, as someone who participates in, in some of these trainings, that while after-school training is a benefit to the budget because it saves on substitute costs, it is at, um, it is as an, add an expense to our teachers because they are working outside of the normal school day hours. And, um, it is also difficult, um, we know that professional development is not as impactful when people are tired. And so, a lot of those programs have had, um, fewer people participating in, um, professional development. So, I, while it's a cost savings and I, I want to support this budget, I do think that thinking, forward thinking into what is going to happen in the future. Um, and, you know, I don't see a sub shortage going away, I don't see a lot of those things happening. But I think that we need to be mindful of the burden that we're placing on teachers.
Um, Trustee Miller, I raised that ex- exact issue, uh, briefly there and afterwards as well, with my concerns. And, um, interestingly, uh, we came back to the superintendent who said this is a real issue, but they actually have been strongly supportive and pushing for that after-school, after-hours training. Um, I agree, uh, I, I think, I would like to see a, a bit of a mix. But, uh, they seem to think it's working at this point.
Yeah, so, it's Elena and I can't think, Steve, I can't think of her last name, Elena Ipsalini? Thank you, Zachary Ross. She's phenomenal. And I do think in our current status where we have sub shortages and difficulties, um, with getting people to, to meet that need, I agree that that is, it's better than no professional development. But I just think that we, we need to be mindful, that we're asking teachers to participate in professional development outside of their school day with no additional compensation. Um, it, it is putting the burden on teachers. the burden on teachers. So I just want us to be mindful that, yes, it's better than no professional development, and it is a savings, and it, it provides, you know, it, it makes it so that school districts don't have to find subs. And I know that that's difficult for all of our districts. I imagine it's very difficult in Ipsilini. So, yes, it is, it is, it is what we can do right now. I just want us to be mindful of it going forward.
If I could, with, with the support of the rest of the table here, I'm happy to add that as a note of concern when we send, if we agree with this, with their budget, to say that we, we do want to be, we want to make, we want to ensure that they are mindful about teachers getting professional development after hours.
Yeah, and I wouldn't necessarily call it a concern, just forward thinking. Like, let's think about how, you know, we're, we're replacing one burden, placing it on, on another party, so.
Burdens are fungible.
I couldn't support that amendment, or whatever we want to call it enough, right? Like, I agree. Like, from a standpoint of, I like the idea of that mixed idea, right? I know that it's a burden on our, it's difficult for our families, for example, to think about some of the, you know, the things we do with early release and what have you. But what that really does is it helps us to maximize the energies of our educators so that our educators are in the best space to implement those professional developments. And so I, I could not support that strongly enough. And I do have one question, and it's a quick one. But do you guys want to talk about supporting that first? I don't want to say we're doing something if we're not as a team.
Hey, the teachers have spoken.
I would also certainly support that. That sounds totally cool.
And I support you all.
Here's my geeky question.
Your what question?
My geeky question a little bit, you know me. So ISDs, do they realize SIR and 11T, like, funds and increments and all that? And how has that impacted the, the ISD budget? Like, I know that school districts themselves have, but what about ISDs? Specifically, ours?
Yes. And in this case, that was that, the big, that was the big revenue change that won the IDEA American Rescue Plan in money that's going now to that funding for the Autism Spectrum Disorder kids.
Okay.
None of the SRS, no?
Just different funding.
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions or comments?
That was pretty geeky.
And Michael, you have my support on sending that feedback as well. Okay, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the WISD 2022-2023 budget as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0.
I did want to know that WISD usually has their meeting the same night we do, and when the meeting ends early, they often sit around and watch us.
[laughing]
I have been told. If you're listening, yeah.
Welcome to the WISD. Okay, Brad, you're up next. Treasurer Gerby, Finance Committee update, please.
Well, I'm pleased to give an update. So we had two items that were on our agenda, the first of which we already really heard about, a lot of things with regards to bond update. We also talked about closing out of the 2015 bonds and Series 3, and so we're gonna, we're gonna be having those things happening with our, our middle school and what have you. And I want to clear up one little technicality from the last time. I said that that was our last major purchase. It was our last major technology purchase that we'll be making. We are not like out of, you know, funds, that kind of thing, but I just wanted to give that small clarification. And then the other thing we talked about was school of choice. We had a, we had strong applications for school of choice, and the lottery has occurred, and we are doing our due diligence on those, and we are updating and following up with families here in the, the near future. And then I guess the last thing I want to reiterate, Dr. Lotz talked about it earlier, but Rex, Jay, and Miranda, the realization of $245,000 from the Michigan State Police Grant for, for securities really is going to allow us to do some work involving InformaCast and, in, in our remaining buildings. And so I think anything we could do to support security and anything we can do where we can be cognizant of, of grants is good. Those grants were competitive, right? Like, we were awarded competitively $240,000. There were other districts that were, whose applications were not as well received as ours, and that is an absolute testament to Rex, to Jay, and Miranda. And this finance chair and the finance committee is incredibly appreciative of your efforts.
Oh, can you provide clarity? You mentioned the school of choice.
Yeah.
Can you provide clarity about DRAWS role and, and what that was about? I didn't catch. Can you provide clarity about your role, like, the finance committee's role in that? I wasn't sure.
So, so our role primarily is that FTEs are attached to students, right? And so we, we just monitor and we look at student count, right? And we want to be able to, to make allocations, predictions, that kind of thing, about our, our expenditures and our student, our revenues from students in line with one another. And so, so we monitor enrollment on a, on a regular basis, and, and school of choice is one of those ways in which we, we, we monitor enrollment.
Thank you. All right, sounds good.
Sorry, did I take your funding?
Thank you. We, we do like long-term forecasting. Thank you. All right, great. Moving on to item B. Michael, Policy Committee Chair, Policy 2340, Field Trips and Other District Sponsored Trips.
We're calling this the Gerby Amendment. No, he asked very strongly that this be moved as far up on the agenda of the Policy Committee as possible. Dr. Lotz provided some language. Just a quick reminder to all of us, one of the reasons for changing Policy 2340 was because occasionally there are last-minute trips that somehow get lost. And if they're out of state or overnight trips, they need to be approved, previous language had that they needed to be approved by this, the board. And in most cases, they have been. And we had, and the public may know that we had a few emergency, two emergency meetings over the last year in order to approve a couple of field trips that fell under that category that didn't make it to the board the week prior. This language, we're hoping and optimistic if you would approve it. And I'll ask the, the other members of the Policy Committee, Trustee E. Step and Trustee Miller, if they have comments to make or question, can answer some questions, that would be great. The language, as you saw, there are two green areas in, in state field trips and district sponsored trips not requiring an overnight stay. They will be approved by the principal or administrator responsible for the teacher program requesting the trip. We thought that was reasonable and appropriate. And finally, the line that will eliminate, what we get in our packets is a list of field trips. So two things are going to happen. One is this line, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the Board of Education, informing them of all overnight and out-of-state field trips. The important part for us in that respect is that we get a sense, a chance to, an opportunity to see trends, and, and also points of pride, hey, our students are participating in such and such an event, and they're finalists and so forth. But if you wanted to clarify that language, sir?
I just want to speak to the way we would update it. So if it is approved, the language is approved, Betty has already created a document where she would feed into the specifics of all those field trips so that each, you know, every Friday, for example, as I'm posting a Board of Ed update, you would get the link and would be able to, and then I'd say, well, there are three field trips, you know, this time, four. But you would see it throughout the entire year as to what's happening, all in that, in that document. So that was how we proposed. We would, you know, inform the board on a regular basis if, if the language is approved.
Right. So the...
Susan, I had a question. Oh, I was just going to add to, I didn't, if you're done, I don't know. Okay. I know something that was important, I guess, question was the legal aspect. And I know part of the emergency meeting was part of that, right? We had students going away in a couple of days, and we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, on the front end, supporting them, just in case there were legal implications. And so I know, I believe Betty and, and the, the team checked in with Neola to make sure that everything, you know, that it didn't have to go through the board process as it has been throughout the years. So I know that was really important for me and the committee, so.
For all of us, thanks for reminding me. We did, in fact, check with Neola and gave them the exact language, and they were, they said that they saw no, no issues, no liability issues, and nothing of any concern to them. So, but, but I'm really glad that we checked, just to be safe.
This, this shifter, this change really allows, really allows this piece of the school district to be, to be where it belongs, which is being in operations. And so I, I feel that, that by aligning this, this policy with that idea that, that there are things that, that we want to allow our administrators to operationalize is, is fitting. And I'm pleased that it, it was approved by Neola. And I think that the other piece too that we added was the notification. Like, we, we wanted to see the trends, we wanted to still have, have a lens on that so that we could kind of, you know, for, for a variety of reasons, for safety, for equity, for, you know, thinking about groups, celebrating groups and their successes and, and different, different pieces like that. So we, we did add that piece because that was, we felt like that was important to our, our group as a board.
As much as I enjoy 10-minute meetings at the end of a long day, I'm glad that this will eliminate that. And for those who are interested, yes, we did do the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of the meeting, even though there was no one in the room with us. We took the, the duty very seriously.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't say something. So the reality for me is I want to thank the committee for, for looking into this, being so thorough about it, and for taking it under advisement and what have you, and being buttoned up on legal things, being buttoned up on equity, being, like, so I, I appreciate that. I will tell you, this was passionate for me because I did never want to be in a situation where our hockey team can't go to Traverse City because four of us weren't able to be able to be there to approve it. Like, that is important experiences for our kids. And so, sorry that I'm calling out like one of the things we did, but like, you know, Julian can speak to that. And my point is, those things to me helped to make our school experience for our students extraordinary, and they involve our coaches, our staff, our, they, they, they invigorate those programs. So, long story short, I never wanted that to be a situation where it was a barrier for them to be able to do those things. And so thank you to the committee, and that was why, that was an important.
Well, and just so everyone knows, we are no longer allowed to meet on Zoom for those things. So it wasn't a phone call, it wasn't a Zoom conversation, it was we had to come together in person to meet and discuss that. And student, and we were here, in here, and students, students were at the cube waiting for that approval. I mean, that's how close it came. So I agree with Brad that we don't want to be back there.
Excellent. Everything is in support of those students. Agreed. And the only reason that this isn't on consent agenda is, per operating procedure, we give the opportunity twice for public comment. So what will happen with this is, committee heard feedback. I don't think we heard any changes, modifications, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. This will go back on discussion for the next agenda, but it can be moved live if there are no further edits to this. We can move to vote, but it'll go on as discussion. Okay?
So it's not going to go on as an action item?
Action.
Yeah, it should be action, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The public will still have, had an opportunity this evening to comment, and they'll have an opportunity at the next meeting to comment if they have any concerns. Which is, which is a nice, you know, this is the, the way the process should work, the policy on creating policies. And we, to, yeah, and to give the public as, as two opportunities to.
That's a favorite. All right. That and the public comment policy. All right, great. Moving on to administration updates, Dr. Lotz.
Okay, I have a quick one, and it's simply about an update regarding the Celine High School principal vacancy. Initial interviews are going to be taking place next week on May 16th. That'll involve administrators, faculty and staff, student and parent guardian representatives. We'll look to identify three finalists for that, from that initial interview. Those three finalists get moved to the principal forums, which are going to occur on May 19th. And times will be posted soon and advertised via email loops and social media because that will be, you know, anyone in the public that wants to come into those forums, which would be the admin forum, parent-public forum, student forum, faculty-staff forum. And then that will, then we will take all that feedback and then narrow it down to two finalists to move on to central office interviews that'll take place on May 20th, with the intent to finalize selection and present to the Board of Education on May 24th. Thanks.
Lots going on May 24th. All right, Julian, do you have any updates?
Well, I have known that are incredibly crucial to the board, just a couple of things coming up for us seniors. Student Council has been working hard to prepare everything for prom, which is on the 21st at Hornet Stadium, nice outdoor event. Hopefully the weather stays nice. It's beautiful today, and hopefully it continues that way. And then I saw, tickets are only available on web track. So if somebody's listening and wondering where do I get prom tickets, rev track. If you guys are wondering where to get prom tickets, rev track.
Don't tell me.
And then coming up, I guess, right after my, right after the next board meeting, May 27th is the last day for seniors. So if you guys have any favorite seniors, come and find them. I'll be here on Tuesday, the 24th, so you shouldn't have to go far. And then June 3rd is the graduation ceremony. So a lot of things coming up, and I'm sure, well, I know I'm excited about them, and hopefully everybody else around is as well. So, thank you.
We will see you and your friends there, June 3rd. Yeah, Brad, did you?
Yeah, I just have one item. So coming off of last week, I'd, I'd again be remiss if I didn't mention how extraordinary our staff is. Last week was Staff Appreciation Week. And, you know, I think everybody here realizes that without our staff and without how extraordinary our staff is, our, our students don't have the outcomes that they have in the school district. So I want to thank educators for everything you do, and you are genuinely appreciated by this board and by me and by, yeah, so thank you.
That was going to be what I was going to say in my board report. So, yeah, just wanted to make sure that if you are someone who works in the school district, that you saw the message from the Board of Education, and just wanted to convey my heartfelt appreciation for the teachers who have impacted my own three children, the children of our community, and who have shaped me as an educator myself. So one week doesn't seem long enough. So if, if you still have some appreciation in your heart, I know that those messages would be well-received. So pass those along to anyone you know in, in our community, and really anywhere that has had a positive impact on you or your child's lives, so.
Yeah, Susan?
So I have a couple of updates. So the fundraiser for Foundation for Celine Area Schools, I was not able to be there physically, but I was able to participate in the silent auction virtually and was a top bidder on an item. It was a small item, but [laughing] somebody bid last, I'll talk to you later. Yeah, it was like, you know, five, like, five minutes to go, and I was like, ooh, I'm going to wait till, like, it's a three-minute mark, and then, yeah, I won. So, yeah, thanks, everybody, for participating in, in that. And obviously, we know how important the Foundation for Celine Area Schools is. We hear about them probably almost every meeting, the funding that they've, you know, been able to contribute to the school, schools has been wonderful. So the MASB Resolutions and Bylaws Committee met a couple weeks ago. I attended virtually as well, but they did, did have it in person, too. So just an update, school boards are able to submit proposed resolutions and bylaws to the MASB Committee for consideration by Friday, July 22nd. Also, the MASB Delegate Assembly is on Thursday, October 20th, prior to the kickoff of the annual conference. So if you're at the conference, you know, go ahead and pop into that. I think you'd get like 10 credits for it, so FYI. And if, you know... And if, you know, on the fly, we didn't get something proposed by July 22nd, a delegate of our board could present, present something on the spot. So fun times. Lastly, I am a chaperone for the Chicago Field Trip this week. I may be more excited than the sixth graders. And I'm thankful that everyone will be wearing masks on the bus. And I hope this will help prevent or reduce the number of outbreaks that may happen. I know a lot of families are relieved by that as well. And I know some of the museums possibly will have restrictions too, so, but yeah, I'm excited.
Go, go ahead.
I actually do have something. I was also at the FSAS thing and saw, former trustee Dennis Valenti was there as well, which was nice to see. So speaking of MASB, last, was it Thursday? There was a little awards ceremony virtually, and some of the people at this dais received some hardware. And I haven't, I didn't keep track of who they all were. So if I could ask you to please just put your paw up if you received a piece of hardware, and that would be, Brad Gerby, what did you receive?
I received recognition for completing the 100 series of MASB.
Board member certification.
So board member certification.
You're street legal?
I'm street legal.
Was that it? I'm building up to, Board President Stedman received not only, I think it was just Award of Distinction, correct?
Level three.
Level three, the Award of Distinction, that's right, that's right, good. And I took last week, so I had to leave the thing early, the FSAS, because I was taking my last MASB course. I have 38 under my belt right now. Catch, catch up. Anyway, but I'm done. That was many, many, many years doing this, though, so. Anyway, and I, I don't think I really actually technically need to take anymore, but I'm, I'm, you know, they've all been really interesting, and I probably will, Betty, I'll probably try and take a few more. All right, I'm done. I'm done. I'm it.
All right, any other comments? All right, I did have several updates for trustee comments. Today was our monthly meeting for the Foundation for Saline Area Schools, so I'll just mention them one more time because we were very appreciative of them raising $55,000 at the Imagine event. It's incredible. It was a wonderful time, we had 200 attendees. My extrovert self was loving it and talking with all sorts of individuals and hearing from community members, parents, guardians, and staff, and had some really great conversations. Thank you very much to the volunteers. I know how much work that is to put that, put that, put that on, especially the film and especially the, the auction, it's a lot of hard work. I'd also like to thank them for the 40 grants that they have approved so far this year for our buildings and our staff. We appreciate you.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I also was going to say, and Ben's, Ben's film too.
Yes.
Featured. That was wonderful, the shout out.
17-minute video. Very nice. I watched it. Also, very excited to say that on the 24th at our next Board of Education meeting, we will be heaping praise on Julian as he, as he adventures off, and you will be meeting our new Board of Education student representative. I will not steal any thunder, so look forward to that. Enjoyed interviewing those candidates that Principal Stager vetted. So Julian and Steve and I could, could interview them. So I'm looking forward to sharing more details once we work through all of the logistics. Also, wanted to give a shout out to Woodland Meadows, Mrs. Finicaro and Mrs. Marshall's class. I'm teaching general, Junior Achievement right now. If anyone is interested in Junior Achievement, maybe they can get with Kara. It's a wonderful, wonderful experience. Appreciate you teachers, I'm team teaching both classes simultaneously, so I have utmost appreciation for you, and I hope that they didn't have too much energy after the Timbits. Also, this spring, I took an advanced Board President workshop, and one of the things that they had mentioned is to make sure that things would, would operate smoothly for any elections that might be happening in your school district. I am not up for elections, so I was happy to, to do that follow-up with no conflict of interest. So been corresponding with the Chief Deputy of Elections for Washtenaw County and making sure that our ballot is being prepared. Did want to mention a couple of things. So number one, we have information on our Saline Area Schools website about how to run for the board, if you're interested in that. MASB also has classes. We have three seats up for the November election that sitting trustees are eligible for and community members are eligible for if you're in Saline Area Schools District. The ballot will be split this year, and this is an important thing to note because if you don't register correctly to run, then it won't go through. So there will be two seats that are underneath our regular four-year terms. So it'll say Select Two. So if we get eight people that run, it'll say Select Two. And then the seat that is currently being presided over by Candace O'Ramaday's seat is a little bit different because that was a six-year term, so it's a partial. Dennis's wasn't a partial, it was completing this year. That needs to be per law, that needs to be separate. So on the ballot, you'll also see right underneath the Pick Two, you'll say a Pick One, and then it'll say for the partial term. Now, all three terms are four years because two of O'Ramaday's have, have since expired at the end of this year. But there are two different places, so the ballot is going to be a little tricky. Registration for running will be a little bit trickier. So I did want to mention that because I had told the team I would follow up, and I wanted to share the information with the community as well. Also, one thing I said I would follow up on is when the, the term would start, if it was a new person, it would still be January 1st. So in that training with MASB, there was a conversation about making sure that you check if it's an appointed term to make sure that it didn't transition within the 10 days after the certification of the election. I am assured that it would start January 1st. So all three new terms would be for four years starting January 1st. But the differentiation on the ballot is an important one to keep in mind. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that I followed up on that and share information with our community. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a board, a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. These items will not be read aloud, but will continue to be listed out individually in the minutes for this meeting. I would like to please entertain a motion to authorize items A through H as part of our consent agenda.
So moved, McVeigh.
Michael, thank you.
Support Gerby.
Brad, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. In closing, I mentioned one item on our next agenda, so Julian and our new Board of Education student representative. Steve, others?
Primarily the Von Milledge Renewal Action Item. And again, I will follow up with all of the requested items for the Board of Education long before the May 24th meeting. And then Truth and Taxation, Miranda, six o'clock, or no one for this one? We're gonna move that to June, okay. So primarily the Von Milledge Renewal Action Item.
Okay, Truth and Taxation until June. Oh, can you turn yours off?
Sorry.
That's okay. Now is our second opportunity for public comment. I do not have any forms, Betty, we don't, well Jenny, you, I know, her one chance at doing the cards. We're missing trustee Jones tonight. She is not able to be with us, so trustee Miller graciously offered to do that. Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on May 24th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of May 10th, 2022 at 9:07 PM.
Moved, so moved, Gerby.
Brad, thank you.
Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries seven zero, we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me clarify, thank you, Michael, I appreciate that, for everything at six zero.